Embedded health insurance for Park County. So I'm not sure who wants to give us an explanation on these changes and why, but we need to start there, yes. And good morning, Matt.
Good morning. Thanks for having me.
You bet. Colleen, do you want him?
Okay, I did not quite pick that up. I assume you want me to lead this off?
Correct.
Okay, got it. No problem. So hopefully everyone got my email that I had sent out late last week. Because I think that that is a pretty good starting point for what we're looking at. And I can walk through just trying to a high level overview of our options. And one option is certainly to do nothing, and we just have to increase the embedded deductible we have today based on IRS rules. But I think there is a better option that would be probably a positive to pretty much everybody on the plan. And that would be going to an aggregate. So to have a tax qualified HSA plan, there are two options when it comes to deductible. Embedded, which is what you have today, and aggregate. And embedded is typically considered more generous because this is going to only affect people that are covering dependents, which as of last month, I believe, there was 114 that had dependent employee plus at least one dependent covered. There were 70 that had employee only coverage. So if we move to aggregate, the 70 that have employee only, this will be a big improvement to their plan. For the families or anyone covering a dependent, one or more, this is where it will be a little different. So on an embedded deductible, one person in the family can can hit the individual deductible, which is going is currently 3,200, but it's being raised to 3,300 in 2025 by the IRS. That one employee, let's say your family of four, one employee gets sick, uses the plan, whatever, has an accident, doesn't matter why they're using the plan, they would only have to hit the 3,300 individual deductible before the plans are paying. Now, if none of the other family members ever use the plan, that would be a positive being having the embedded because in an aggregate situation, the option, that one employee of the family, if that's if that's the only person in current plans, which I think is would be quite unusual, but it's possible. They would have to hit the full $6,400 family deductible before the plan started paying. But again, that's today's world, what you're looking at. The good news is with an aggregate style approach to tax qualified HSA plans, there's more flexibility on lowering that deductible level. So what we what we had considered and looked at, and I talked to your your insurance company about was, what if we move this from a 3,300, which is going to happen in 2025, individual deductible, 6,600 family deductible on an embedded basis, and we moved it to an aggregate, but with a $2,000 individual deductible, 4,000 family. So they said, Matt, that's that's a great idea. I think, you know, 80% of the HSA plans in existence today are on an aggregate basis. So you are a little bit of an outlier with your embedded. The good news is, obviously, as I mentioned before, all those people on employee only coverage, they would see a big, a $1,300 reduction in their out of pocket for deductible if we made this change. Because if you don't have any dependents covered, it's irrelevant what kind of plan you're on. So they would go from today being 3,200 going to 3,300 down to 2,000 before the plan started assisting them with their expenses. For anyone that's in a employee plus dependent situation, so that's the majority of you at 114, the aggregate approach would not kick in until there were $4,000 of expenses, and that could happen on any one individual or across, spread out across the whole family unit, whoever's covered. The good news about that scenario is your current, it's going to 6,600 on an aggregate, on a family deductible, January 2025. Because IRS made that rule. It would save if any, if a full family was using the plan, they would have a $2,600 less out of pocket in that scenario. Because if the plan starts paying at 4,000, not 6,600. Is that, is that making sense so far to everyone?
I think so.
Okay. To talk about what's probably super important to everyone in the room is what does that look like on a liability basis for the county? Like, will will that increase costs significantly? Your, your insurance company, which is Companion Life, they do your stop loss and they set your rates and all that good stuff. They told me that they would see that as be no more than a 1% to 2% increase in your claim liability. Just based on, they know how many of your folks use and hit that full family deductible today. And they don't see a major impact of that changing, even with the lower max deductible for families. If we went this route, so they, we wouldn't require any mid-year plan rating funding changes. What we would, but they would certainly start paying attention to it. And again, if we did this in January, the plan renews in July. So there'd be basically six months or probably more like four months of data that they'd be using to see if they necessitated that 1% to 2% increase next year, on top of how your actual experience goes this year. It's, those are two related, but mutually exclusive things. So it's not a big, it doesn't appear to be a big financial liability situation for the county. And it was certainly, I think it would optically and in reality be a better plan design for your membership.
Questions at this point? I'm not seeing any questions, Matt.
Okay.
Anybody from Bobby, Lisa? Anybody here? Okay. I guess what's the pleasure of the board then?
Well, it seems like the aggregate is the way to go with the recommendation. I like the idea, but well, pay it in, reaching your deductible. If we hold any of the employees at all, as far as their preference, I suppose they would probably want to go the same route.
Who would?
Yeah.
So it was emailed out to the whole insurance group. And I heard back from Lisa and Joy. And I believe that's all I came back from. And that was on. Right. So, and, and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, you could still have a little more discussion on our Thursday meeting. And, but I, Thursday, November 21st, we have open enrollment, but we're in open enrollment starting Friday. So it would be nice and we can put together a packet of information explaining it to the employees moving forward, what they'll be looking at from January and June. I think that is the reason partly, sorry, why we wanted to have the today. Because I'm going to be.
Matt, I'm sure I think one thing I like about it is it gives us six months to test it. See what, see what it does in six months.
And I think the account is in a, in a position where this is a good time. We have the funds in there that we can test it without. And then see what happens by July 1st to make the decision.
And Colleen, let me, I'm sorry, I did hear a question in there earlier. Yeah, we're meeting on the 21st of November with the insurance committee again. But the reason I think we expedited this to the table prior to that is because of the open enrollment starting. And we wanted to make sure that employees got actual accurate data. And RCI and Companion Life are just waiting for me to give them the go ahead when they update the contract and how the plan pays and all that good stuff. So we do have a little bit of time constraints that we're looking at.
Okay. And this would be for a January 1 start, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Matt.
Yep, my pleasure.
Where we at?
Wait, Mr. Magdul, let's just get to the motion. I will make a motion that we go with the aggregate plan put together, which is the the option for Park County. Switching from embedded to the aggregate deductible of 2,000, 4,000. Second.
A motion and a second to change Park County to the aggregate plan, which is including a $2,000 and $4,000 deductible. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Going to post? Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Matt.
Yep, my pleasure. Have a lovely day. See you soon.
You too.
Certainly benefit me the most.
You did me.
I'll just stay.
You did great, Pop.
Thanks.
That one backfired on me.
You better hope that wasn't being broadcast.
You better hope that one didn't broadcast.